It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum.
Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zine, please make your way to council chambers.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present.
Good morning, everybody. It is now 10:20. We have seven members present. Councilmember Burnson, Councilmember Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself are here. We need ten members for a quorum. Well, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Zein, please make your way to council chambers. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, August 8th, here 2001. It is now 10:30 a.m. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday as close to 10 a.m. as possible. We can be viewed from home on L.A. City View Channel 35, or heard via council phone, or viewed via webcast on the city's homepage. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Hahn, Holden, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley Thomas, Wax, Weiss, Zein, Padilla, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Hahn moves. Mr. Burnson seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Ridley Thomas moves, and Mr. Wax seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several items that have been requested to be continued. Item number nine, a request to continue that item for one week to August 15th.
Colleagues, request to continue item number nine. Without objection, item nine is continued.
Item number 19, a request from Councilmember Reyes to continue that to Friday, August 10th.
Colleagues, request to continue item number 19.
Yes, Mr. President, item number 19.
Without objection, that item is continued.
Item number 20C, a request from Councilmember Weiss. That's one of the closed-session items, to continue that for one week to August 15th.
Request to continue item 20C. Mr. Holden.
One requested item nine, in fact, might just be continued for, did it say one week? And I want to call that special because I'm not sure that that should be the case.
Okay. Then without objection, we shall reconsider item number nine, and we will call it special at the appropriate time. Colleagues, before us is a request to continue item number 20C. Without objection, that item is continued.
Next items, Mr. President, items noticed for public hearing on the regular agenda. Item number one is a hearing, 1911 Act assessment in Council District 5, and the council action should be to deny the protest and confirm the assessment.
That's item number one?
Yes, Mr. President.
But both items number one and two are before us. Mr. Reyes, do you wish to speak?
I just wanted to call item four and 13 special, but I'll wait.
Okay, we'll get there. Colleagues, items one and two are before us.
And, Mr. President, excuse me, on item number two, we need a motion from the floor to grant the application.
Well, first of all, let's dispense with the public hearing on these items. They have been noted for public hearing. I do not have any requests from members of the public to speak. So now, colleagues, any members wishing to speak on items one or two? We do require a motion on item number two. Let's open the roll on item number one. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item number one is approved. Let's hold item two on the desk. It relates to Council District 13, and Mr. Garcetti will be with us shortly.
Next item, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, items three through 10. And you have, item number nine has already been called special, and item number 10 has cards from the public.
Item number nine is called special by Mr. Holden. Item number four called special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Ms. Hahn?
On behalf of my colleague, Mr. Garcetti, I'm asking for seven and eight to be called special.
Seven and eight by Mr. Garcetti.
Item three.
Item three by Ms. Misakowski. Mr. Burnson, any specials? Any other specials? Madam Clerk, any other specials?
No, Mr. President, and the council will be voting on items five and six. Five is an ordinance, or has an ordinance on the file, and there are not 12 members expected today, so that ordinance will be over one week to August 15th.
Let's go forward with the first reading on that. So what remains before us, Madam Clerk?
Items five and six.
And what about item 10?
That was called, that has a card on the item. Do you wish to call that one special?
Did we fulfill public hearing on this, the last?
A public hearing has been held in committee.
In committee, and I believe the last time was in the full council. So we're not required to reopen the public hearing, and we won't unless I hear a motion from the floor. Seeing none, let's open the roll on items five, six, and 10. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 11 through 19. And there's already a request on number 19 to continue that, so that would be 11 through 18.
Item 16 called special by Mr. Burnson. Any other specials?
14 and 17, just for a substitute motion.
14 and 17 by Ms. Misakowski. Any other specials? Seeing none, Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Before we close the roll, Ms. Perry, did you wish to speak?
On item 13, please.
Item 13 called special by Ms. Perry. Any other specials? Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved.
Next items, Mr. President, are the closed sessions. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold closed-session items on the desk.
On the continued agenda, item number 21 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Colleagues, item number 21 is before us. Anybody wishing to speak on item 21? Seeing none, Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item 21 is approved. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, going back to the specials, item number three called special by Councilmember Misakowski.
Ms. Misakowski.
Members of the council, I just wanted to call this to your attention. It's an ordinance first reading, so we won't be able to adopt it today without at least 12 members here. But this is actually a temporary reduction in the collection rate on the gas users' tax, a four-month reduction to our citizens for the very high natural gas prices that had started to escalate in terms of the energy crisis when DWP was producing more energy to help feed it to the other areas in the state that didn't have that capability. And we felt through budget and finance, in fact, this council had asked that this ordinance be drafted, and it's actually before us today, to adopt that four-month relief to our taxpayers. It's an estimated $10 million in tax relief that this ordinance is going to help give back to the ratepayers in the city of Los Angeles for what had been their participation in assisting the rest of the state in the providing of some energy, and they should not have been penalized for it, and that's what this ordinance recognizes and creates that reduction.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn?
My question, when does this begin? This, I mean, I don't know if there's staff available, but clearly, is there staff available?
Antonette Cristobal, Director of Finance. This particular ordinance begins December 1st, 2001.
So coming December, this December?
Yes.
We're offering utility users' tax reduction only for gas?
That is correct.
And to last for four billing cycles?
It's for four billing cycles, which tentatively would end April 15th, 2002.
Was there any discussion in terms of if gas prices, which clearly gas prices have dropped at this point, they're almost as low as they were, you know, several years ago? Was there any discussion in terms of if the gas prices have fallen to a certain level that we still want to introduce this ordinance?
I don't believe that that was addressed. What happened was during the fiscal year 2001, we did experience a windfall from the utilities' users, from the gas price, and so we thought that it would be prudent to offer the residential customers a reduction, a temporary reduction in their gas tax rate.
So you're just, it's really based on the high gas prices?
Right, from the past fiscal year, and that was factored into this fiscal year's budget, the 10 million.
And can I have some more information in terms of how we then raise this back up to 10%?
We aren't raising it, we are just giving a temporary reduction, and this was worked out with the city attorney so that we don't have to go back to raise something later, which we might have had to do if we were doing a different kind of a rebate program. So this has been worked out with the city attorney.
I don't have a lot of comfort on that. I mean, we're dropping it to a 6% utility users' tax from a 10%. So we are dropping it, so at some point, if we're going to reinstate it to 10%, that's clearly, you know, I don't have a lot of comfort. There was, in my, I thought there were some lawsuits of other municipalities that tried to do the same thing, and they came into conflict with Prop 218. So tell me how this does not apply to that.
Well, I think we need to have the representative from the city attorney's office, but I can tell you, what we were advised was that if we temporarily reduce the tax rate from 10 to 6%, that because it's a temporary reduction, we would be able to raise it back up to, or reinstate it back to the 10% level once this ordinance expires. And I don't think that we're necessarily entirely immune from having someone come forward, but based upon what we've received from the city attorney's office, we feel that the city is somewhat protected there.
Basically, what we're doing is continuing the 10% tax and refunding 4% of it. We're not, we're not in...
Well, that's two different things. I mean, if we refunded, it comes out of our, because the tax has already been collected, it's already ours, and we would be then rebating it or refunding. That's very different than having all the customers show on their gas bill that they are not paying 4% of the 10% utility users' tax. Those are two very different things. We're either refunding it, which is taxes that we've already collected, or they're not paying it, and that's two different things.
We're not actually refunding. We're actually reducing the rate temporarily, but the, the, by doing it the way we're doing it, the city attorney advises that after that four months, it will go back to its original number.
Footnote in the bill explaining this is will be very clear. This was an instruction from the city council during the last year's budget period, which in fact is when the high rates had, and the windfall had occurred. So this was prepared as part of the budget package of last year, signed off by the city attorney, and then all of this is the implementing ordinance, consistent with all of those concerns that we had as well, that this would not be a permanent reduction, but something that would create a temporary rebate for that period.
I just want to know, have we studied the City of Hawthorne's lawsuit on this very issue?
I haven't, but the...
This is the same thing. They reduced their utility users' tax and then tried to reinstate it, and they lost the lawsuit.
If you'd like to put it over a day, interestingly...
Well, we can't vote on it anyway, right, or what are we?
This is just a first reading today, so we'll go over one week, and why don't we have the city's...
I'd like to have a little more comfort on the legality of reducing it and then reinstating it.
Interestingly, reading the ordinance, it says the collection rate, not the rate. In other words, it's how much we would collect. It's a fine distinction, but I think that's the major difference between the, because we don't, we don't usually impose collection rates.
Thank you. Ms. Misakowski, did you wish to speak again? Ms. Hahn, do you care to withhold, or, we don't have 12 members anyway. So Ms. Hahn will withhold, this carries over for one week for a second reading. Next item, please.
Mr. President, Mr. Garcetti is here now. Do you wish to take item number two up? That was an item notice for public hearing, and it was a public convenience necessity, and it was in CD 13.
Let's give him another minute to settle back in here. Let's take the next item.
Item number four called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, did you wish to speak?
I want to reclusive myself from this vote.
Okay, let's wait for Mr. Reyes to leave chambers. Yes, Mr. Weiss.
Mr. President, I'd move to reconsider the vote on item number 10. There's an amendment that I'd like to offer, it's a friendly amendment.
Okay, let's dispense with item number four first.
Okay.
And then we'll take up reconsideration on item number 10. Mr. Reyes is now out of the room. Clerk, please open the roll on item number four. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item four is approved. We now have a request from Mr. Weiss to reconsider item number 10. Any members wishing to speak on reconsideration? Seeing none, Clerk, please open the roll to reconsider item number 10. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item number 10 is now back before us. What is the next item, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, item number seven was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there staff available here? I just had a question about how we arrived at the 3 million mark.
Robert Andrade with the City Administrative Officer. The question is?
Good morning. We had the 3,819,828, and I understand that we only need 3 million to implement this. How has that figure arrived at? I mean, obviously, one is a pretty precise number, the other one's a little bit more general, if you could just detail that.
The 3.8 million is what the department, CDD, is awarded, or was awarded by the county when investigating the need for the advance. We were informed by the department that a total of $3 million advance was only needed. The balance, the 800,000 and change, could be used, or the CDD could manage that difference for the time being. Should those dollars, once those dollars become available from the county, then they could go ahead and reimburse that.
Okay, so is this a capacity issue in terms of not being able to spend it all right now? Is that the feeling from the department?
That would be, yes. That is correct.
Okay, and do we, does this endanger anything for next year's funding from the county in looking at CalWorks?
I'm not aware of what the county's CalWorks allocation is for next year. That's something we can certainly look into and get back to you or your staff in terms of implications.
I would, yeah, if you want to say something on that, that'd be good.
We're currently operating program. We have 15,000 youth in work experience as we speak, and we are, we, the largest amount of money is in payroll to the youth. So the immediate danger is to be able to make payroll. We are expecting a check from the county on Monday, but the county has a ruling that they only pay after the fact. So we have to front the money. They are, our experience with them, however, has been that they are very responsive in paying their funds, so as long as we invoice them, they do pay us, but there is that short window when we need the funds available to, to be able to, primarily to make payroll.
And has the, I mean, certainly, we all know that there are young people in our communities that would benefit from, you know, jobs and job training. Have we looked at next year to see if we can plan ahead to make sure that we can meet the full allocation and change, make whatever changes necessary to meet that instead of having that allocation dry up? Because I'm sure we can find young people in our communities that need those jobs.
Assuming that there's the same level of funding from the county next year, I would assume that there would also be an advance required since the county only reimburses expenditures, to the extent then that the department could set aside money, other sources of monies, and use those as a reimbursement process. That's something that can be looked at.
Okay. I mean, I understand the advance issue, so I appreciate that, but I just want to make sure that we can use those precious dollars as much for next year. Okay, thank you.
Any other members wishing to speak on item number seven? Seeing none, Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Item seven is approved. Let's try going back to item number two. Mr. Garcetti. Item number two.
Just a quick statement on this item for continuing funding of Melvyn and Myers to allow us to pursue the city's appeal. This is really critical, and I think this is something for everybody in the public to focus on as we really try to pressure the federal government into making sure that we get the proper census figures. This not only affects us in terms of the federal dollars that we get for many of our community development programs and our CDBG monies, but also it's going to affect how we do redistricting internally. And for instance, I know Councilmember Reyes officially, in the census, his district, the population has officially gone down. I think any of us who have, you know, spent time in the community know that probably the population has increased, but because of the lack of statistical sampling that the Census Bureau used, it's really punishing us both in the ability to get the dollars that we need and to conduct policy internally. So just to put that on people's radar.
Mr. Garcetti, thank you. You actually spoke to item number eight. We also had called item number two special at your request. So with that, with those comments, let's take up item number eight. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Clerk, please open the roll on item eight. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Item eight is approved. Now let's go back to item two. Mr. Garcetti? Mr. Garcetti, you wish that one to be called special as well? No further questions? We also, we do require a motion on that item. Do we have a motion?
Move the report? Or remove the recommendation, other?
Ms. Sikowski.
Can we hold that on the desk for a minute?
We'll keep it on the desk. Next item, please.
Item number nine called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden.
All right. Mr. President, remember, I support granting the hardship exemption, and someone said this should be continued, so I said, "Let's call it special for the purpose of discussion." If anybody have any opposition to item nine, then, and the recommendation of the Plum Committee, then I, let's hear it. Now, otherwise, Mr. President, I ask for unanimous aye vote.
Okay. Any other members wishing to speak on item nine? Mr. Burnson.
I just want Mr. Holden to be aware of one thing. If we approve this, we are giving them a exemption that lasts forever on this. It's not just on, for this sign. Once we, if we approve this hardship exemption under the ICO, then they have a forever right on that particular thing. Is that what you want for your district?
Mr. Burnson, it's, this is...
I learned this after our action in council.
Yeah, you recommended out of committee, and let me respond to it if you want to hear my response.
Yeah, but the reason I bring this to your attention, Mr. Holden, because we didn't, we were not aware of the fact, we were made aware of the fact by the city attorney after the Plum Committee, that we weren't just giving them a...
Mr...
Okay? It's up to your district. You want it, fine.
Yeah, right. Mr. Burnson, in response to you, just to clarify the record, an ICO is for 180 days, 180 days of run, period. We also granted an extension of an additional 180 days, but if this were requested 180 days before the extension was granted, Mr. Burnson, it would have been okay. Let me say this, however. That super graphics exist already with the Shadil, Shaquille O'Neal on the wall, and with some other religious leaders and teachers on the wall. That's all that'll be used for. The final ordinance, I don't think, has been adopted, which would prohibit, so I...
I just want you to know one thing. If you approve what we did in committee, you're approving that forever, as far as being there. I just want you to understand that.
All right, Mr. Burnson.
If that's what you want, I'll support.
Mr. Burnson, I thank you for your unanimous support from the committee, and I thank you for your support today.
Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I'm going to shock my colleague and tell him that I actually support this sign, this large super graphic in the 10th District. The technicality here, and although Mr. Burnson is correct, that under the ICO, we were looking at it with a perception that whatever we would have passed in the future would apply. The other thing that we were told in committee is that this had been a technical reason why it was coming for us for an ICO. They had in the past been ready to apply for building permit, and were told that back then that they didn't need one. So, had they been given correct advice in the, in the past, this would have been a sign that would have been up, would have been, had it's permanent. And although it's permanent as a sign, as they change the message, as they change the image, it still needs to go to Cultural Affairs. So, there is that catch on it that is helpful, and I think will, can be useful in the future. So, again, I had no problem with upholding the recommendation of the committee to grant this, both on the technicality side and on the image side, and that it will go forward to Cultural Affairs in any changes in the future.
Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, one no.
Item nine is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 10 was reconsidered, and I believe there's an amending motion.
Mr. Weiss.
Forthwith on item nine.
Forthwith on item nine. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise because I share the concerns of many that prompted the lawsuit here in the first place. And we're doing an important thing here as we approve this, this framework element. And I think that what the Hillside Federation folks have pointed out correctly is that the weakness, the weakness in the equation here involves transportation. And I understand that the city can't guarantee that certain federal funding and state funding is actually going to occur, and that these transportation improvements are going to occur. Jeez. But, but what I think we should do, and I've talked about this with the Planning Department, and they're amenable to doing it, is require the Planning Department to report to the Plum Committee on a regular basis, the status of implementation of the temp recommendations. My colleague, Ms. Sikowski, also has a similar amendment in that's already part of the report, that again, has the purpose of requiring reporting and potentially triggering council scrutiny, should certain thresholds be met. And so, I would offer a new, a new item C to recommendation number seven of the Plum Committee, which would require that the Planning Department report with the cooperation of LADOT to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee relative to, one, the current status of implementation of the framework temp recommendations, and, two, the current status of funding sources for the city's share of temp recommended transportation improvements and programs. I think, I think that that amendment, while not fully and completely addressing the reasons that were here in the first place under the lawsuit, will, will make sure that the city reports. And I think it's important that the city, that the Planning Department really understand they have an obligation to provide us with timely and detailed reports in this matter so we can monitor it. And that's, that's why I moved for reconsideration, and I'd ask my colleagues to support me in this amendment.
Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, Mr. Weiss. Basically, you have to understand that this framework does not approve one single project anywhere in the city. It was never intended as such. It is basically a framework, a blueprint, for what we should look at as we do our development under our 35 community plans. Most cities do not have a framework. They call their community plan their general plan. We have 35 of those. This is basically something that we ask our city departments and our council to look at when we make determinations, either in bringing up to date our existing community plans or specific plans, or if we have a project, that is a significant project, that we look at these things to see if these things that are set forth in this blueprint have been looked at appropriately. So, I don't have a problem with your amendment. As a matter of fact, you get to the point after a while, I've been fighting this, to get, to get this before the council for about 10 years. It's been delayed by the lawsuit. Originally, it was intended for what these folks really don't want, and that's no growth. It was intended as a growth control measure, to make sure that we didn't stop growth, but we regulate it, and we have the capacity to deal with it in an appropriate, in an appropriate manner. So, I don't have any objection to that. It's merely a document that's used for reference. And as such, we should approve it. I don't, it's, it's, as I said before, it does not approve one single project. That's done on a, on a community plan basis, or a specific plan basis, as it comes before the regular process through the Planning Department, through the commission, through the Planning Committee, and finally to the council. This merely says, "Look at these things." These are sewer capacity, water, transportation, housing, and other things that are required that we look at, that we're supposed to do in our community plans. It just sets forth something for the planning process, that I thought would be a good idea. I think we ought to approve this, get it behind us, and I think the, there was a technicality that this was set back forth on the lawsuit. We have corrected that, and I think it's time to move forward with it, if the council so desires. If the council doesn't want it, that's fine with me. I'm not going to be here. You don't have to have one. It's just something added, and plus, to help you in your deliberations and help our various city departments note the responsibilities they're supposed to have and provide to this council.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of my colleague's amendment. I think this is an important step forward. And I know the Planning Department gets beat up quite a bit, but I also want to praise them for having the general plan. I think that is a critical thing that we do need to recognize, and I thank you for that. It really gives us the ability to talk in a macro sense about the city in a way that we're not required to do so, and I think that's very important. Really, the three cornerstones of planning have to be along the lines of sustainability, economic development, and making sure that we have equity in the city. And what coalitions we have on this council, or among some of our friends in the audience, and each other, and the Planning Department, crumble sometimes, depending on which one of those pillars we're focused on. I think we all want a sustainable city, first and foremost, and really, that's my entry point. But we also need equity in how we do our planning, and where that planning goes. When we talked about the Chatsworth property that Councilmember Burnson was dealing with a couple weeks ago, former Councilmember Hernandez turned to me and said, "If this was in our districts, we'd be arguing about whether it's 5 or 800 people rather than 4 or 8." And having some perspective on the equity issues, I think, is going to be a critical step forward, and I, I know that that's in the capable hands of Councilmember Reyes and his chairmanship as well. One of the things I would ask of the Planning Department, though, is to make sure, I think last time I rose and I said, "Having a vision without implementation can sometimes be empty." And I realize the general plan is not where the implementation occurs. But one of the mechanisms that we're, we ask for, and I think is critical, looking at mitigation, is making sure that we can have that, one, every two years or every year, some sort of check-in in the progress of how we're doing in achieving the general plan's goal. That is so critical. I really cannot underemphasize that. It is something that we need to have some way of not bashing each other over the heads, but seeing how are we doing and allowing public comment and other people to be part of that process. I know it's a staffing issue, but we have to prioritize that. And I rise in really encouraging the department to achieve that, and in support of this amendment. Thank you.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise in support of my colleague's amendment. As a, as a new council member, this has been a frustrating four or five weeks in terms of trying to understand this general plan framework. I have been frustrated, my office has been frustrated, in trying to get information from our Planning Department. I've got to say that I, I think the opposition to our general plan framework stated their case much more succinctly, much more clearly, much more understandably, than we are stating our case for approving this general plan framework. I realize that we've had the hearings, we've had the study, it's been in committee, but I don't know how much comfort, I don't feel like I have a lot of comfort about approving this general plan framework. I don't feel like a lot of the issues have clearly been addressed and identified in terms of how we actually plan this city in the next, you know, 30, 40, 50 years. And I think we need to do a much better job in this city. I think our Planning Department needs to have, have a much better summary of our general plan framework, not only for council members, but for the public. We just haven't done a good job, in my opinion, of really identifying how we really are going to set forth this framework to really address housing, transportation. Coming into work for me every day, I think I come the farthest, and you just cannot get from there to here, anywhere in this city. And it's, it's a frustrating thing, and I don't want us to be accused, colleagues. I do not want us to be accused as the body that had no vision, that had an opportunity to really lay forth a plan that addressed an issue that we, we will live in a great city. I think some of our forefathers have been accused of not having, a long time ago, not having the vision for this city. We are growing. It's no question about it. They are coming. We are growing, and I want to make sure we're able to address these. So, I think that annual plan, or the annual report, is critical. And one of the things I would also like to suggest, I know we should not be in the business of planning this, this city in 15 pieces, or addressing this city in 15 pieces, but I would like to see this annual report to really break down in terms of council districts. I think we all would like to know on an, on an annual basis, how these target issues are being addressed in our own council districts. So, if need be, we can begin to make adjustments and changes to make this a livable city.
Mr. Reyes.
I too rise to support Councilman Weiss's amendment. I think it's critical that we listen to Councilman Burnson and his observations. For 18 years, he's been grappling with the land use issues. It's been a very difficult, it's a very complicated city we live in. But this is a skeleton. Basically, we're looking at a skeleton. And the community plans make up the substance, the meat and the bones of this body, you know, of this city. So, as we begin to articulate where our body is ailing, we can work together to find ways to remedy it, which resources are applicable, which census, which neighborhoods qualify for resources. How do we create a linkage between those folks that have the luxury and the ability to see problems from a bird's eye view versus those who are really in the grind of day-to-day of just surviving and feeding their families? So, these kinds of issues are very complicated. They're not going to be resolved in any one session. But the fact is, we do need something to stand with, and this is a skeleton that can support this body. Now, I know in the Northeast Community Plan, for example, it took eight years to reach some level of fruition, but we had what I like to call creative tension between the folks who were living in the hillsides with, with those folks who were basically, were living in the flatlands. And so, those entities that felt comfortable building up density around rail stations, around major intersections where major bus stops crossed, it made sense to have a childcare center there, a job training center there, a learning center, coupled with housing. Things that help us make people independent and valuable assets to our communities. Community plan can address those kinds of issues with pedestrian-oriented districts, trans-oriented districts. Again, not everywhere we need to put those kinds of policies, but we need to start looking at how we can look at the big picture, the big fit, and how we bring resources into these areas. And it is going to be a very complicated process. I'm looking forward to working with each council member, with the neighborhood councils, with the mayor, and trying to establish and continue refining this fine grain of analysis of how we begin to reach that notion of compatibility and make our, our city healthier. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sikowski.
I appreciated listening to Mr. Reyes, particularly as he's going to be assuming the chairmanship of the Planning Committee, which is going to be pulling this all together. Members of the council, what this framework is telling us, and what the communities are telling us, is we've got some very hard decisions ahead. As we've said, this is the skeleton. But what does the skeleton tell us? It tells us we have policies, that we need more housing. We need housing relating to where there's open space and recreation and schools, and we need housing where there's infrastructure. And we also need to preserve quality of life. We need to preserve in some areas our low-density neighborhoods, which people like about the quality of life. Members of the council, some of those policies are in conflict. Some of those very policies are in conflict. You're going to hear, that's what the tension of this plan is. That's the tension of every case that we hear in front of us. That's the tension we're going to hear in neighborhood councils, where the neighborhood councils are going to say, "We like our neighbors the way they are. Don't let that high-rise come in. Don't let that multifamily unit nearby on a transit corridor, because it's different from where we are right now. And yet, this plan says, 'That's what we need.'" So, members of the council, this framework and the tension is that tension of all this wonderful litany of great policies and making it work. In the, in days of old, people used to say, "Well, you know, we don't need to go further and further out in suburbia. Put the density where our suburban core, where our urban core is, where we've got the infrastructure." We look today, and that's where the infrastructure is the most depleted, the most taxed, the most heavily used, and the most not providing the other kind of resources for just more housing and, and, and traffic. That's what this framework is telling us, and that's why there is not comfort, because it is hard. The motion that Mr. Weiss has brought in, coupled with the ones where we had said we need these annual reports, we need to know where those tools are, we need essentially that report card that Ms. Han talked about, is where are we doing? Where are we growing? Are we, and members of council, I'll tell you what it's going to say. It says, "We're going to grow with more housing units, more traffic, more congestion in the areas that already have the highest housing, the highest traffic, and the highest congestion, and not so much in the other areas." How we grapple with that, how we deal with that, and still maintain the framework of those community plans, which have put out in some areas, every one of our community plans says there shall be some growth, lesser or more. But there's always a range of growth, and we always go to the low end of growth in any plan that we look at. You see here, mitigate a project, cut it down. Cut down the number of units. Cut something lower. And that's, that's where this tension and separation continues to occur, and that's what this framework, this framework gives us all the tools. We've got to know which ones to use as we implement it.
Mr. Wax.
I have to ask Ms. Sikowski, I, I think the tension is, is one that's, will in fact occur, but I don't quite... But I don't quite think it comes to the conclusion that one side will be saying, "We don't want this, we don't want this, we don't want this." I think some will. But I think a lot of others will say, "This will be acceptable if we can mitigate the impacts." And they don't see here anything that actually requires any mitigation. A report that comes once a year that may say it hasn't, it's getting worse, that things haven't been mitigated, you know, that's too late. What is there prospectively that says, you know, in resolving this tension, we will require before approval mitigation? So far, it's been left to case by case, council member by council member, community plan and specific plan, where they're applicable, if they're not altered or amended or changed. And that's been the system that has had some good results and a lot of bad results. And I think that the people who've experienced the bad results are saying, "We'd like a little guarantee that that history won't repeat itself in those cases." I don't see in here, I think that all of this, I support all the amendments and all, but it still misses the fundamental underlying, I think, idea that there are really no requirements for mitigation, or there aren't sufficient requirements for mitigation. And that's the fundamental problem that I see not yet addressed, that's been the concern of the people who brought the lawsuit and who opposed it before. And I think all of the other things, I mean, there are a lot of good stuff in this plan. People really should read some of the things. It's pretty fantastic. And people who've worked on it, I think, get a lot of credit for that. But there's still this fundamental flaw at the end of the line of no actual tying in of mitigation to, and that's, so that's the problem. I'm still wrestling with it, Cindy, and maybe you can carry your argument a little further to address that.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. But that's actually something I would like us to discuss, too, is, you're right, it's the idea of the mitigation for when we begin to get these annual reports that say, "This is what's happening. We've missed, we've, you know, we've got some negative impacts happening as we speak on all these issues. What relief does the residents of Los Angeles, what can they expect from us?" Is that something that could be in the annual report, some sort of a recommendation for mitigation that we could then address annually? I'd like to see that as maybe part of, the other thing was, I want to make sure that in this, and I know this is a friendly amendment to the amendment, but I do like the idea of breaking it down in council districts. I would also like to hear how we will include neighborhood council input into the annual report on our general plan. And I'd like to hear someone address that.
Mr. Holden.
We don't know, Ms. Hahn. I will say that the only thing that remains the same around here is that things change, and that's unchanged. And what I mean by that is that, that's not my phone. What I mean by that is that you will get an annual report, and you, as a body, if you find that there's a, someone is really not adhering to the spirit and intent of the ordinance, the plan, then you're obligated, based on your decision at that time, to change it. You can. Eight votes can give it today and approve it, and eight votes can take it away. It's not forever. It's not even for eight years for the term that you'll be, you'll be here 12 years, we'll take care of that. So it's not going to be even for 12 years. For how long that you want this ordinance to be in the form that it is. And if some developers and some council persons are crossing the line, and there's sufficient evidence to suggest that that's the case, just change it. No problem. And it'll take more than a year to get a project off the ground anyway. Some cases take 14 years. I've been working on a project 14 years, and, you know, outside agitation is the reason why it's not done. And that can happen. You can really want to do something good for your district, and a few individuals can take that opportunity away from you during the time that you serve in your eight years. And that's frustrating, that you have to leave, the job is not completed, it's not done. So, but in any case, you can tighten the rules as you see fit, when you decide that that's what you, in fact, want to do. But for today, Ms. Misakowski, who tried to be nice to me a little earlier on, but, you know, I didn't accept that. And Mr. Burnson, hardworking, looked this matter over, put a lot of time in on it, and that's the way they saw it at the time, and I concur, for the most part. It's not 100%, it's not 1,000% on target, but 99.9% is good enough. And that's about as best we can get right now, today. And for that reason, the ball is in your court in the future, as you digest these reports, annual reports that are coming forward regarding mitigation. And for that reason, to put Mr. Burnson frustration at rest, I'm going to offer him the olive branch and give him an aye vote.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a technical thing. I'd never actually offered that as a formal amendment, but if there seems to be, and I know Councilmember Hahn agrees, why don't I make that as a formal friendly amendment as well, that we do have the requirement of a yearly report on this? Thanks. From the Planning Department.
Mr. Reyes.
Councilman Wax raised some statements and points that are very, very true. And I believe Councilman Burnson, in our sessions with Plum, has brought up the very fact that for these plans to have more teeth, we need to coordinate better with building and safety. We need to have that implementation evolve in such a way where folks come in, submit a plan, and it's okay to have plan check. But you have all these conditions or overlay zones that, for one reason or another, are overlooked. The project gets started, there's a lot of anger in the community, frustration. You go back and realize it wasn't supposed to have happened. So part of our challenge in the future is, how do we strengthen that oversight? How do we strengthen that communication, that dialogue amongst those folks at the entry point, when these plans are coming forward? So if we are protecting our hillsides, or we are protecting our green space, they stay protected. Or if we are allowing for a densification for senior housing, that truly is allowed. So again, we need to take heed to the experience that is before us, that is with us today, and take advantage of those understandings so that we can start looking at our processes, so that building safety can improve its ability to monitor and look at plans, so that communities don't get punished for projects that shouldn't have happened in the first place.
Ms. Misakowski.
I think the suggestion is a good one about the report. And actually, when someone said, "What are the mechanisms? How can we find a tool to implement if we find we're getting further and further askew?" That is the amendment that we had brought in in Planning Committee last time. It's listed as item B in the Planning Committee report, to which Mr. Weiss's motion C adds even further input, but it basically says that we have to have potential mechanisms to look at how we adjust, if we need to adjust, based on these reports. I would also just like to ask two things. One, that the Planning Department makes sure that every council member has a copy of the last housing population statistic report that was done by the Planning Department, which does provide what we are asking in this, although it's statistical, it's broken down, if not by council district, it's broken down by the framework that they use it, which is our 35 community plans. So every community plan, it tells you what the population has been, how it's grown, what the housing is, what's happening, what it is, it's replete with information. But we need to now take that information, have a report, and weigh it and measure it. I would also like to ask, I don't think it needs to be a part of this in an amendment form, but members of the council, we should have, with every major planning case we have forward, we get a report. Is this consistent with the general plan or not? Normally, that means is it consistent with the district plan. I think we should have a checklist, a checkbox, or some statement there about the general plan framework, and what this project, any project that comes forward, how that project relates to the general plan framework in terms of the policies that it is meeting, or the policies or mitigations that it's not meeting. Rather than just the defined community plan, let's elevate also the general plan framework. So we are, as we are looking, because that's where the real test is going to be. It's not when we get this annual report. It's going to be day in and day out on the council, whether through Plum or whether on council, we look at these projects that are coming in from any number of areas. And we should know where and how that fits in the general plan framework in terms of the mitigation policies it's meeting, in terms of our overall plan. And I think that will start to provide the connectedness that we need, that I think we feel is missing today.
Mr. Holden.
I think tonight, the council members ought to go home and watch this show on television. Starts at 7:30.
I do every night.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, and you're learning from it. Some members, not too long ago, talked about, "We want more housing. Every single one around the horseshoe, we've got to have more affordable housing." Right?
Correct.
And you believed that. I believed that you believed it at the time. But I told you, there would be others who say, "Not in my backyard." And if you start to want 100% concurrence with your recommendation, a suggestion, as you make an agreement with a potential developer, things are going to come to a stop. You'll get nothing. Then you ever hear about trip fees for commercial development, and whether or not they're going to come up with the money, and the project get to be so much where they can't even develop it at all, and, you know, nothing will happen in this city anymore. You can shut it down. But that's what you want to do. I have no problem with it. Eight votes can do anything it wants. Make progress, stand still, which means you're going backwards. But you better be consistent about what your commitment is, and what you say to the public when you start talking about affordable housing. And then there are those who say, "Not in my backyard." And then how are you going to deal with that conflict of interest? You are on the hot seat. We just didn't turn the burner on yet. But when they do, you're going to feel the heat. And better start getting the message now. I would say to you, my dear friends, that Mr. Burnson has done his best that he can do, and that's good enough for me. He's looked at both sides of the issue for 20-plus years since he's been here. And he's seen all the arguments on both sides. He's seen every ICO, every ordinance, every trip fee ordinance, traffic, you name it, associated with a developmental project. And so you can't get 100% agreement, but you get the best you can get. And that's what happens in politics. You get what you can get for the people that you represent at the time. And so I'm going to join with Ms. Misakowski and Mr. Burnson, Mr. Reyes, you also reviewed this, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Hernandez has been over there, my good friend, Mr. Hernandez says, "Okay, then it's got to be right." I ask for an aye vote.
Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, I appreciate all the interest and the comments. Remember that whatever we do, even community plans, specific plans, they're merely plans. They're not approvals. Joel, an answer to your question about guarantees, can't give any, couldn't give you a guarantee, the sun's going to come up tomorrow. The reason that the court threw this back to us is because somebody had put the language in, "guarantee," in the report. That's what had to be changed. That was all that had to be changed, by the way. We took care of that. This merely is a blueprint. It's put forth for this council for the future. The future is yours. I mean, you know, some of us are believing soon, and, you know, we've done our best to try to chart a course for you and to lay down some paths that you should follow and things to look at. This plan is going to change, I mean, you know, because the city is changing. And we're growing in population. You can't stop it. You can't stop progress. I don't care what you do. If you wanted to, you couldn't do it. Although some people would like to see us not have any more, not one more person. But we know that's not going to happen. We're going to continue to have congestion and so forth. What the plan says is, look at all of these factors when you're doing the business of the city. If you want to make it a better city, look at these things and put them into your community plans. Look at each project. And yes, I would take, I would assume, as Ms. Misakowski said, that there would be a checkoff, because that should be part of your environmental clearance, Mr. Wax. That's what guarantees that these things are taken care of. Now, if we approve projects that we shouldn't, then we're not doing our job. We're not following state law. State law requires that we have a housing element. They require that we create a certain amount of housing, whether we want to or not, whether your constituents, Janice, want to approve it or not. The law requires it, and if you don't do it, they'll cut off our funding. Believe it, it happened in Atlanta. And I would invite, if you're interested in what's going on in regional planning, which involves this city, because we're the center of it, every one of the members of this council are automatically members of the Regional Council of SCAG. I have only seen one or two of you through the years to participate. You have a voice. It's not happening. The interests of the city were not supported at our last meeting because I was the only member there from this city council. Now, if you really are so concerned about traffic mitigation, if you're concerned about housing, you're concerned about these things, get with the picture. Start attending these meetings. They're once a month. Believe me, you have something to contribute. It's important to the city that we're properly represented there. And if you don't like this plan, you don't have to adopt it. Or if you want to adopt it, you feel that it has something positive, adopt it. If you think it needs to be amended, all you've got to do is amend the thing. All it takes is eight votes on this council. You're going to be in charge of the future. The future is yours. But this gives you something to look at. It gives you a guide, a light in the forest, to say, "That's the direction we want to go." That's all it's intended for. It can't guarantee, any more than a community plan that you have that's done in your district guarantees that every single lot, every single unit is going to be built out to the fullest. Most community plans in 30 years, if they achieve 30% or 40% over a 20- or 30-year period, that's a lot. They never fulfill the full extent, because if they did, we wouldn't be able to move in this city. But yet, we're required by state law to have community plans.
Thank you.
That's binding by the law. I'm not going to talk again. I just conclude. I would urge an aye vote, but it's up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Madam Clerk, there's been at least one amendment filed, and I believe another verbal amendment. Can you clarify, please, what's before us?
Mr. President, Mr. Garcetti made a verbal amendment, a friendly amendment, but I need clarification on that. I'm sorry.
The amendment was to require the City Planning Department to report once a year on the progress in adhering to the general plan and the framework element, with input from the neighborhood councils as well.
Madam Clerk, is that the only amendment?
No, Mr. Garcetti, excuse me, Mr. Weiss has a verbal amendment that that was, to add a new recommendation C to the Plum Committee Report, and that would be to report with the cooperation of LADOT to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee Report, excuse me, Committee relative to the current status of implementation of the framework I-T-I-M-P recommendations and the current status of funding resources for the city's share of T-I-M-P recommended transportation improvement and programs. And also, there's a written amendment from Councilmember Burnson that was 10A.
Okay.
Which is a technical amendment. And do you wish to take all those together, or do you want to put them separately?
No, let's take them one at a time. Mr. President.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. Garcetti's motion, I don't see I could be incorporated in the ordinance. It can be the legislative intent, fine, that's number one. But nowhere in the ordinance can I think be written to say that the neighborhood council would have a role. And further state, or further state, that the city charter that was recently adopted provide for neighborhood councils to address issues of, am I right? Issues of development in any given area, and they would provide their input. That's a matter of law, a matter of law already. And what I could be done, to be my guest, if it's a feel-good motion, fine. But, look, we can't just do feel-good motions around here. Okay? And you're just going to start doing that, and somebody's going to come back and, is going to come back to haunt you. It is the law. You must adhere to the law. Neighborhood councils is not imaginary, it's real. And they have a role to play in projects in their respective neighborhoods. And the role is going to be, "No, no, no, you can't do anything."
Ms. Hahn.
With all due respect, Uncle Nate, we are, I just introduced a motion that was co-signed by Nick Pacheco and Dennis Zine, which we will be discussing on Friday, which is a 10-point plan, and it is going to be an ordinance which gives more teeth to the neighborhood council. So just because the city charter says they are allowed to give input into any issue, local, state, or federal, or worldwide, does not necessarily preclude us from including in any ordinance a specific instruction for one of our departments to in any ordinance a specific instruction for one of our departments to include input from the neighborhood council. And I don't think it's going to come back to haunt us. I'm not afraid of this. And I still want that in this ordinance to say that this annual report will include input from neighborhood councils. And I think for a while, we're going to have to instruct our departments to include input from neighborhood councils. Because it is, it is something new, we've never done it before, and I want that to be our burden to include their input, instead of including, making the burden on them to get their input to us.
Madam City Attorney, would that be significantly changing the ordinance before us?
Well, there is, I was just about to say, there is no ordinance in front of us. This is a resolution and findings and a report. And I think that motion can just be made as part of the report and the request by the council.
Mr. Wax, for a second time.
I think Ms. Hahn's points are very well taken. In fact, the charter even goes further. The charter requires that the city adopt an early notification ordinance, which will govern matters like this, hopefully, and many others. My fear is that that, my fear is that that really won't happen. Or it won't happen in a meaningful enough way, because the early notification ordinance, perhaps, is the single most important requirement of the charter respecting neighborhood councils beyond giving them the resources they need to organize and operate. If you give people enough notice, if you give them the information, you will get the feedback back. You will prevent the one thing that has hurt our decision-making all along, and that is decisions too often made in a less-than-open manner. So I think that the first step is doing what Ms. Hahn is suggesting here. At least make our statement every time along the way, that making it clear that the neighborhood councils will be involved in the process. And if we do that enough, every time we take actions, whether it's on planning matters, economic development matters, or other matters, we will slowly get, hopefully, to that point where we're going to recognize what an early notification ordinance can be. I think that the single most important thing this council's going to have to wrestle with beyond funding for the neighborhood councils is a meaningful early notification ordinance. It's just critical. It's paramount. The Charter Commission's had a tough time dealing with the wording. We put it in in a very general way, but eventually, it's going to have to be fleshed out. And it's going to be absolutely paramount, I think, to the success of the councils. In the meanwhile, we should take every opportunity, like the one you're now presenting, to reaffirm and make clear the principle that the neighborhood councils are going to be a part of the process. And we should do it every single time we have an opportunity to do so. And we will partly get ourselves towards the ultimate result of the notification, early notification ordinance.
Ms. Misakowski.
First of all, I was just going to indicate, as the City Attorney already did, that before us, we don't have an ordinance. I also think that the motion of notice to the council on the annual report and inclusion with the neighborhood councils is important for all the reasons we've stated. Although it's in the charter, telling our staffs where it's important, and this is an important one. And the other thing that's going to be important about this is, many of the neighborhood councils will know about the community plans, but they may not know about the general plan framework. So it's going to help make our neighborhoods understand the whole complexity of the big city and how it fits in, and how that general plan fits into the framework and all the other policies that we've got to incorporate, and how everyone plays a share. So I think it's going to be useful on both sides and as well as the council. So I think the motion was a friendly amendment, is an appropriate friendly amendment, and friendly both to the council's action, but hopefully friendly as it's considered from the Planning Department staff as well, about what we need to do to bring them into the process of working with the neighborhood councils.
Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, Joel, I just wanted to say this, that those of us that have had neighborhood councils, and we've had one for 22 years, all of our planning matters always went to those neighborhood councils. So they were part of the process. And I think that there's nothing wrong with including that language that says that they should be part of the process. They should not, they should be a part of the process in an advisory capacity. Otherwise, the council doesn't need to meet.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I understand we have item number 10 and amendments offered by Mr. Garcetti, by Mr. Burnson, and Mr. Weiss.
Yes, Mr. President.
Any additional amendments?
No. Do you wish to take the amendment separately?
Mr. Burnson moves all the amendments collectively. Without objection, Clerk, please open the roll on all the amendments. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All the amendments are approved. Now, let's open the roll on item number 10, as amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Item 10, as amended, is approved. Let's send that forthwith. Next item, please.
Mr. President, Mr. Garcetti's staff has advised that item number 2 can be voted on at the present time, and it's a motion required. It's a public convenience and necessity in Council District 13.
Any members wishing to speak? Mr. Garcetti.
I'd like to move to make the findings of the Caldera Report.
There's a motion on item number 2. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Item number 2 is approved. Let's take a pause in the agenda, colleagues. We have a special presentation today. The chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
I'd like to, I know many of us today are going to be speaking to Junior Statesmen of America. I'm sure we have some alums here on the city council today. And I wanted to welcome them here on this day of their 20, sorry, 25th Annual Los Angeles Symposium. And they're looking closely at the inner workings of city government, local government, state and federal government. Many of us cut our teeth in politics of the Junior Statesmen of America. They are an invaluable organization that really does great outreach to all of the young people of the region and of this country. And I know that this resolution today has been signed by a number of council members. It was presented by Ruth Galanter and Council President Alex Padilla. So it is my distinct pleasure to honor these young people who are here today with this
Do any of the future statesmen wish to say a few words? Or stateswomen?
Hello, council members. My name is Marissa Daniels from Lynnwood High School. I live in Los Angeles. And basically, what the Junior Statesman Foundation has been doing for the past 25 years, this is our 25th anniversary, is taking local and state students who are interested in the local government of the city of Los Angeles and exposes them to what goes on behind the scenes, as we have just witnessed today. And it challenges us to look deeper into the way public policy is carried out in this city. And just as the Junior Statesman challenges us to think deeper in the way we interpret the acts of our body, our governmental body of Los Angeles, the Junior Statesman now challenges all of you to consider the youth when every decision is brought before this floor, that we look to you for the example of leadership of Los Angeles in the future, something that a class or a book cannot teach us. And so far, we've got a very good example for that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Very well said. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for that presentation. Best of luck to all of you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number 13, called special by Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Council President. I have a supplemental resolution on a project in the historic core in the Ninth Council District. It is an adaptive reuse project to create 153 new units of housing. And the funding is tied to this resolution and the bond issuance, so it has to occur today and go forthwith to the mayor.
Any other members wishing to speak on item 13?
Excuse me, Mr. President. Is this an item that's an additional item? Has the court, has it been distributed to all the council?
I have a representative here from the CRA. He says no.
So you speak to just the item that's before us? There's no amendments? There's no...
This is a supplemental resolution, which needs to be adopted today. The council adopted the underlying resolution on June the 21st.
So do you have a resolution, a written copy of that, Ms. Perry? Or a staff? That the clerk...
I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson from the Community Redevelopment Agency to sit at the center table and answer that question.
Mark Johnson from the CRA. We did transmit a supplemental resolution to the city clerk's office. We're merely asking that this supplemental resolution be adopted to make a minor change in the existing bond resolution.
Madam Clerk, do we have a copy of that resolution?
I believe the resolution is on the file, Mr. President.
Okay.
And I ask for that to go forthwith.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Any other members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That item is approved, and we shall send that forthwith. Next item, please.
Item number 14, called special by Councilmember Misakowski. There is an amending motion on 14F. And these items are the special event motion. So do you wish to vote on items A through K and the substitute motion on F altogether?
That sounds good. Ms. Misakowski, did you wish to speak?
Just clarification of the technical correction on F.
Thank you. With that, Clerk, please open the roll on item 14. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Item 14 is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 16, called special by Councilmember Burnson.
Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, I have no problem with it. I'm prepared to support it. But I just wanted to bring to the attention of the council that it's the responsibility of landlords to obey the city law. Those, we passed an ordinance many years ago that required that all of these security window gates and so forth have, be easily opened from the inside. And anybody that's not adhered to that is in violation of our city codes. So there may be some cases where it's a requirement to people that own the building, and, I mean, that own the property of the home themselves and can't afford it. And I have no problem with that. But I would suggest that we require the landlords who make a profit from renting to be responsible in building and safety and force this. But to the extent that there are some cases where people cannot afford to do it and safety's involved, I fully support that. But I just, I wanted to bring it to your attention, Mr. President, members of the council, that we instruct building and safety to ensure that the codes that have been, safety codes that have been passed by the city council be enforced. And I don't know if that's been happening. I know a lot of them have, but I suspect that there are still some, and we still hear of cases where people burn to death because they can't get out.
Thank you. And I do believe there's an amending motion that may possibly speak to that. Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, there is an amending motion, there's 16A. It essentially augments that which is before us. It may be your recollection that some years ago, both Mr. Hernandez and I were confronted with the situation that was most regrettable, to say the least. It was a reminder of those who are often victimized by illegally-installed security bars. In other words, children and seniors are those who are most often affected. And so it is, with that in mind, Mr. President, members of the council, that I offer three items that are essentially amendments to the motion before us. They are as follows. They request the city attorney to look into the possibility of requiring security bar compliance before a home is sold. Number two, we request the city attorney and the housing department to look into the possibility of requiring compliance with security bar regulations before registering a rental unit. And finally, to request the city attorney to draft an ordinance prohibiting future sales or installation of security bars without safety release mechanisms. It is high time, in my view, that we become far more aggressive about the issue of illegally-installed security bars. As a matter of fact, security bars end up being a misnomer. Why? Because they do not provide security. In fact, they are unsafe to those who are entrapped and the community that surrounds them. In the instance of the fire to which I refer, it was a matter of retaliation compounded by a matter of illegality on the part of the property owner who had failed to do right by those tenants. Mr. Burnson's suggestion is one that is certainly consistent with my thinking. And not only that, but the three amending actions effectively patterned themselves after what we were hoping to do with the gas, shut-off valves. In other words, to try to make this more cost-effective, rather than thinking that inspections will take place. But in fact, the ordinance is in place that puts the onus on the property owner to sell and or rent in a way that is consistent with public safety and the well-being of those who would be prospective owners and/or tenants. Mr. President, members of the council, I ask for your unanimous support of the main motion and the amending motion itself.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley-Thomas. Actually, if appropriate, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of both the amendment and this is, this is one of those moments when there's really a human consequence behind important public policy. And I think this is critical. I think many of us in our districts have had instances of people who have been burned and not been able to get out, sometimes with tragic consequences of people dying. I think it's critical for us, not in this, only in this pilot study, to be looking at the education side. And for all of you who are watching on Channel 35, make sure that you check your own bars to see if they do have release mechanisms. And the second part, which is, I think, the most critical, is how do we get funding for low-income residents to make sure that they or their landlords in low-income housing can get these done? Because this really permeates many of the streets that I know many of us represent. So I rise in very strong support of this.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Item 16 is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 17, called special by Councilmember Misakowski.
Ms. Misakowski.
Mr. President, members of the council, there's a technical amendment. This is on a support for federal authority for using DNA analysis, getting some money from the state. And this is just a technical amendment to make sure we put it in the right account.
Okay. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Clerk, please open the roll on item number 17, as amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Item 17 is approved. Next item, please.
This is the time for our comments from the public on non-agenda items under council's
This is the public comment period, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm here as a consumer advocate for the public in the coming renovation, $63 million renovation of the Griffith Observatory, and requesting ramps to go in the front door of the building. And at this point, we are totally blocked in that request. And so I have brought it past the Parks and Recreation Department to your attention. And I know it is in District 4, but I also know that there's no representative on the council at this point from District 4, and no vote or anything. But we need to get past the point of looking at a minimum ADA requirement on this. We need to look at it for not just handicapped entrance to the building. We need to look at it for all the young couples with children in strollers who cannot get up those front steps without a great deal of difficulty. We need to look at it for the handicapped, and we need to look at it, and I double-checked, I couldn't believe it, 78 million baby boomers. Now, they're not all going to come at one time, but we need to have that access. And if in the statement that we are going to take you to the outer edges of space... And if in the statement that we are going to take you to the outer edges of space and make that planetarium much more comfortable by brand-new chairs in there, then we should make the entrance more comfortable for everybody. And it is not just the entrance, but the accessibility of getting out of that building, egress from that building in case of any kind of disaster. We need those ramps up the front door. Please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This concludes the public comment for today's meeting. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to... I understand there's cards on closed-session items. Do you wish to take those up before going into closed session?
Yes, we'll take public comment on the closed-session items. Let's do that after we clear the desk.
Okay. You have motions for posting and referral?
Those motions are posted and referred.
That clears the desk for closed session.
Thank you. The council will next go into closed session, but before we do so, we'll take comments from the public on items that are agendized for closed session. The council calls forward Danny Lahave, to be followed by Deborah Stevens.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. Danny Lahave, representing California Home Development and the track number 47357. This case has been heard with the council and Planning Commission. This person, Maria Mahia, appealed this a few times in front of the Planning Commission and in front of the council on the ground of easement rights. And then this thing was rejected. She went to civil court and was granted the judgment for... based on defective notice. She's going like zigzagging, and it's really a big harassment for us. We've been in this project for like two years, and it's causing us a lot of hardship and a lot of financial damages. We'd like to call... we'd like to ask the city council to reduce this hearing. We have to hold a court order... we have court order properly noticed hearing that the city have to hold. We'd like to keep this hearing in limited scope to these items that were affected by the defected notice that was given by the city of Los Angeles as the court order. And we have discussed every aspect of this development for the last two years with the neighbors, with the president of Homeowner Association of Shadow Hills, and we have addressed every issue and listened to all concerns of the neighbors. We made a lot of modifications regarding the environmental trees issue, birds, grading, street improvement, and everything was issued. Everything was listened and tried to accommodate everybody. We also reduced the track from 28 lots to 23 lots in order to accommodate everybody. Everybody is happy now.
If I could ask you to conclude, please?
Okay. We just want to ask the council to finalize this as soon as possible. Instead of sending it to the advisory agency, maybe we can have only one hearing, because at issues, only the environmental, that they say, the petitioner, the appellant say that she did not receive a notice that the city of Los Angeles was adopting the negative declaration. And we'd like to get this done as soon as possible, taking it to the council instead of the advisory agency, so it will reduce our costs and finalize this as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Deborah Stevens?
Good morning. My name is Deborah Stevens. I was one of the original appellants in this matter, and I was originally opposed to this track because there were many issues that were of concern to me, since my house directly borders the proposed track on two sides. The developers did meet with me and other concerned homeowners adjoining the proposed track. They did listen to my concerns, and they were able to resolve those issues that were of concern to me. I am here today to state that I accept the current configuration of the track as has been approved. It is my personal opinion that these developers have much integrity and that they do understand the nature of my neighborhood. Therefore, I do feel positive that they will construct homes that will enhance the character and value of our horse-oriented neighborhood, and I am completely in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on the closed-session items. If the desk is clear, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Then we shall adjourn into closed session. Guards, please clear the chambers. Madam Clerk, what is the item before us?
Mr. President, there was a request on 20G to continue that matter to September 19th.
Without objection, 20G is continued.
And item 20A is settlement in the case of Mark Goodman versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $74,900.
Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Forthwith on that item?
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Any adjourning motions? Members, please rise.
Adjourning motions, Mr. Reyes. Yes, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Elliot J. E.J. Saffirstein. Elliot passed away July 31st, 2001. Elliot E.J. was a well-known external relations assistant to Dean Karen Lash of the University of Southern California Law School, known to all as E.J., died on July 31st, Cedar Sinai Medical Center, Los Angeles, of complications from heart surgery. He was 39 years old and has been very happily married to Liz Saffirstein, lesion for less than one month before his untimely passing. Born September 8th, 1961, Harrisdale, New York, Saffirstein received a bachelor's degree from Vassar in 1983 and a master's degree in playwriting from the University of Washington in 1990. He moved to Los Angeles in 1991 to pursue a writing career and joined USC as Dean Lash's assistant in 1993. He quickly became a much-beloved member of the law school family, respected and admired by the faculty as well as by hundreds of students with whom he had contact. E.J. survived by his wife Liz, parents Jack and Susan Saffirstein of New York, sister Julie, Massey of New York, and nephew Scott and David Massey, also of New York. He will be missed, but will be remembered by his many friends and family.
Mr. Wax.
I'd like the council to adjourn in memory of Moraine Reagan. She passed... Moraine Reagan. She passed today after a very gallant fight for more than five years with cancer. She was a personal friend and someone who I admired very greatly. As you know, she was very devoted to her father, but she also was a person who had her own independence. She supported the Equal Rights Amendment, supported several of us for council seats. I remember Councilwoman Picas, myself, and others. She was quite a very special person. She was an actress, a talk show host, political candidate, commentator, an author, an activist, and deeply devoted to her father and preserving his legacy. Most recently, they had the... she adopted and became a permanent citizen, a daughter from Uganda. She leaves her husband Dennis, her daughter, obviously her parents, President Reagan and Jane Wyman. And I'll give the clerk the pertinent information.
All members on that. Any others? Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.